I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees Special Meeting. Today's Wednesday, January 9th, 2019. The time is 6:02. Please pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note the roll.
Noted.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Removed and supported. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none. On to the business portion. Is there a motion?
I move to meet an open session, entertain a motion, take a roll call vote, and call a closed session for the purpose. To consider disclosure containing the township attorney written opinion letter, set under ACL 15, Doc 268H, as attorney time privilege, with the tenure suite of the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees, Attorney Gary Rentrup, Mayor Jim Sharp, and Board Secretary of Public Affairs.
Support. Moved and supported. Any other questions? Roll call. Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Durk?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Starting with Algen.
Oh, I really don't have anything to say tonight. How about that, huh?
Okay, then.
No comment.
None for me.
Nothing.
Nothing.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. Today's Wednesday, January 9th, 2019. It is at 6:32. Please pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note the roll.
Noted.
Approval of the agenda? I'd like to move the resolution in honor of Sue Basardi to item five.
Support.
I'm going to move the consent agenda down then.
I'm going to move everything else down. It's been moved. Is there support?
Yeah.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the approval of the agenda. Let's, never mind. The consent agenda.
I thought you moved this. What did you think about that?
Okay. I didn't write it down. Okay, Sue. Come on up here, please. Let me get to this. You just stand right up here.
Where? Here?
Yep, right there.
Close your hand.
Let me get to, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas Sue Basardi was elected to the Oxford Village Council, serving from 1994 into 2000, and 2013 through 2018. And whereas Sue Basardi has served the community with diligence and enthusiasm throughout her 13 years in the Oxford Village Council, and throughout her years as a resident of the village of Oxford. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees and all who served with and worked with Sue Basardi express our appreciation and admiration, admiration of the professional skills and effectiveness she demonstrated, and fully recognize the incomparable contribution made by Sue Basardi to the Oxford Village Council and citizens in the village of Oxford. And be it further resolved that the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees wish to honor and publicly express our gratitude for Sue Basardi's years of service and dedication to the village of Oxford, and we wish her much happiness in the future. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there support?
Second.
And roll call. Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
By all means.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Trustee Durk?
Yes.
You know, Sue, I've known you for over 20 years now, and I want to thank you for agreeing with me 100% of the time.
[laughing]
But, you know, not only is this for you, you know, we appreciate your service, but the Basardi name has been part of the village of Oxford for over half a century. Maybe we don't even want to talk about the years, but, you know, we appreciate what the Basardis have done for the village of Oxford, which is in the township. And just to say thank you very much for your service.
You're welcome. This came as a surprise to me last night when Bill said something. And I really appreciate it. I appreciate all of you guys that give your time to the township and the people that do in the village. It's a huge commitment, and I want to thank you guys and give you a hand, because you do. I know how it is, and it's a lot different sitting on that side than it is sitting on this side. So, thank you guys, too.
Okay, no thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
That's it. Okay, let's move on to the rest of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions? Roll call. Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Durk?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
On to public comment on items not on the agenda. Mr. Myers. We're going to be using three minutes tonight.
Good evening. Dr. Bruce Myers, 3100 Delano, Oxford Township. I have two items. First one is Bill, I'm sorry, Supervisor Dunn had made a comment that if this was so important for us to be addressing ordinance changes within our area, that we should be going to the planning commission. I should note that we have been going to the planning commission and addressing this for well over two years. There is even a joint session of the trustees, the board, and the planning commission a number of months ago, where we were promised that ordinance changes would be addressed, and that has failed to happen yet. I've gone in front of the planning commission so many times to bring this up, that I should be able to stand up there and say the usual inequity of the minutes, the master plan, the build-out plan, the ordinance change, and so forth. But this has been addressed a number of times. And a number of times, I've seen things where the ordinance was supposed to be addressed, and all of a sudden, solar panels got put in front of it, something important like solar panels, and then the tree ordinance, spacing of the trees. Why not address something important? And in order to keep my three minutes, we have something that came up where you must appoint people on the planning commission that address certain segments of the community, and you have to designate who those people are. In the past, you can shake your head all you want, but nobody's ever told us. In the past, a lot of us have just gone to Callie, because she understands horse area, and, you know, the problems that come up with ag and so forth. But now, we have a new person that was appointed, but we don't know who we're supposed to address for the horse country, hunt country, agri area. We don't know. We need to have you assign somebody for us, so we know who to go to. Now, we have somebody that kind of lives in that area, but doesn't really know our area. And basically, we don't, at least I don't feel that she represents that area, because she wouldn't even get up and introduce herself to a good number of the people from that area that were here. I asked, even though the officer that you had escorting us out of the meeting last time proposed that question to her, and she wouldn't even answer yes, no, or maybe. When she first came into the chambers here last time, I said hello to her husband, I said hello to her, just walked by, wouldn't even say hello. So, I don't feel that she represents us. So, I would like for you to, you know, basically designate and name somebody who represents our area. Well, I shouldn't say our area, agriculture, horse country, hunt country, and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Go.
Hi there. Kelly Rosner. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to serve that many years on planning commission. I really felt like I was able to help the community as best I could. One thing that was a constant stumbling block is what Bruce had talked about, and it's the lack of representation. The Michigan Planning Enabling Act applies to this township, and the law says that you shall appoint to the planning commission to represent important segments of the community. The planning act goes so far as to define those segments, one being agriculture. That is the law. I'd be happy to provide that copy to anybody. We've done it multiple times. So, your job is to make sure the planning commission represents those important segments, and assign people to those segments, so the community knows who to go to. You should have someone assigned to educational, someone assigned to the commercial and business, you know, areas, so that if you have a problem, you know who to talk to, and that person brings it in front of the commission. So, me being in that horse country, in the agricultural zoning, I am in the agricultural zoning, the residents came to me many times. They came to me in many numbers, and I would tell the planning commission the frustration that they have with the ordinance as it sits now. And that's what I brought to the commission. And a lot of people wanted to peg me as being a troublemaker, but I'm doing my job. I'm doing what the Planning Enabling Act tells me I'm supposed to do, is represent that segment and bring their concerns forward. So, I brought their concerns forward. It wasn't responded to. So, then the citizens came to these meetings. They came in great numbers to the planning commission meeting over the past three years, and asked for these ordinances to be changed. And they weren't changed. Other things came up. This board addressed the importance of that segment of the community. It's in the master plan. I don't think there's any argument that it's important. But if we don't make these changes to the ordinances, changes are going to come in that are going to destroy the fragile character of that area. And we don't all want to be subdivisions in Oxford. We want to be a diverse group of people having very important interests, and that area brings something special to the township, as does each and every area we have, including the unique character of our village. We have some very special things to preserve. Due to the frustration, the neighbors said, "Why are we being ignored? These are common sense changes. We want, there's zoning text changes. It's not rezoning. We just want the words tweak to protect us in legal means." And it hasn't been done in three years. So, they said, "Let's become the petitioner, so it has to be done and gets that going." When we asked what it would take for us to do a zoning text amendment, like the one you did for solar panels and street cheese, we were told we had to pay $6,800 to the township. That's for rezoning. We're not asking for rezoning. We're asking for a text amendment. We just changed the text of the zoning ordinance without changing the meanings. And so, I don't think it's fair to ask us to pay $6,800 for something you promised us to do. So, at the last meeting, that's what the group was asking for. Please allow us to be the petitioners to represent our group and come in front of you with our impressions, and let you decide.
I'll give you extra time.
Okay, because I'm trying to narrow it down, so the people don't have to come speak in. I don't have much more to say.
I'm happy to give you extra time.
Okay, so what we're trying to do is come in as a group, an organized group, which we are, and come in and show you the ordinance changes we want. And the process is you send it to the planning commission. You've done that multiple times. You've asked the planning commission to address it. They haven't once involved our group. They haven't once asked for our documents. So, you go to the horse's mouth, literally, right? You know, ask for these documents from us, so we provided it to them. We ask that you simply allow us to become the petitioner, so we can work with the planning commission, have that public meeting, bring it to you, and let this board decide if the changes we're looking for are something that's acceptable to you. That's all we're asking. We ask it to be done in a timely fashion. And so, we're prepared with the application. If you're going to demand that money from us, we will raise that money, but I don't think it's right. I think it's something you should allow us to do. I think it will benefit the township as a whole. And so, that's what we were asking for last time. And when people think they're not listened to, they get angry, and they felt like they haven't been listened to in the last three years. So, you're seeing that anger and frustration, and I'd like to just get to the bottom of it, make the ordinance changes, and improve it for everybody. That's what I'm asking for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any else? Gary, you're going to have to, please, tell, tell, tell everybody who you are.
Gary Rentrup, Township Attorney. I was given the printout that was submitted by their attorney, Mr. McCabe. I responded to Mr. McCabe. I looked at the proposed text changes, and quite candidly, I couldn't follow it as opposed to what exists versus what is being proposed to be changed. I couldn't digest it. And so, I responded to Mr. McCabe and asked him to please provide us a red line copy of the changes they're proposing in the existing township ordinance. That's how we do it. And I sent to him in Word form your entire zoning ordinance, so that he could work from that template of the Word document and show in red line what changes would be required. And then, I think it would make a lot easier for everybody to understand what, what we're after here. I couldn't digest it in the form it came in.
Okay, thanks.
Gary, see, responding back.
I've not heard anything back, though.
Let it be real quick.
Okay, good. The group really doesn't really have to go through the attorney. We are kind of ready. If he wants it in that format, we're happy to work with the group together. We don't know the process of how you're going to allow us to do this, so, you know.
Just, just a red line copy of the change in existing ordinance.
Okay, it was real simple. Hold on.
That's the toss it out and replace with that.
I'm not going to allow, this is why we don't comment. This is why it's public comment, not less discussion. So, we'll get back with them. Sir, you had your hand up back there. Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Jim Munus, 3575, Garden Road, Oxford. I completely agree with Callie. There's so many loose ends when you come in the office. It's hard to understand what we're being told, why we're being told that. And when you ask the question is, turn around, the person walks away. Just leaves you there. We got it on camera. We, we got the words and arrogance on camera. It's completely out of context, people. As a taxpayer of Oxford Township, I have most recently, and now am trying to understand who's in charge of Oxford Township. Bill Dunn, or Deanna Cushing, or who? Decisions that have in recent months have and are putting the township in harm's way. I'm not sure everybody on the board understands what's going on. Maybe you do. I would suggest that this board tonight dig in and get the honest facts on the activities in the departments of the township, and make the personnel changes, which are definitely needed. If you were a taxpayer and you came in here to get the information that our group has over the last year and a half, you'd say, "You know what? Nobody knows what's going on." In order to meet the honesty and integrity that the taxpayers expect, you would not put up a, if you were a person in business and have employees such as we encounter. I want to say this. If the board needs help, a group of taxpayers are available to offer some assistance on what we are talking about. We don't have to do it here tonight. But, believe me, when I look at the group here, it's like, "What's he saying? Go home, mister." We're not going home. We're going home tonight, but we're not going away. Trust me. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Going back to what Callie had said regarding the $6,800 outrageous fee, if you think that's what it's going to take, then that's what we will come up with. But I urge you strongly to look at something like that, because that just don't look right. $6,800. I might as well hand it to you right now, so you can do whatever it is you're going to do with $6,800, file a text amendment. It makes no sense. I think you would be in agreement on that? I guess you were silent. Will you look into that? Can I ask that question and get a response?
Yes.
Yes? How soon can we hear a response back of what that fee might be?
I'll hear it tomorrow.
Okay. How will we hear it?
Give me your phone number.
248-390-8687. Paul Warfield, 1220 East Davidson, Negriff.
What's your name?
Paul Warfield.
Paul, what's your last name?
Warfield.
Number, please? 390-86?
87.
Okay, Paul.
And also, I looked on the board on the outside. I didn't see any posting for a closed session meeting.
It's posted.
Took pictures.
It's a special meeting with a closed session within the meeting notice.
Not required to be posted?
It's out there. If I could walk out, I'll show it to you.
Okay. Because I took pictures. Thank you.
Don't you, I'll take a couple seconds.
Go out there.
We're in recess for a couple seconds here. Yes.
Are we back in session, then?
Yes, we're back in session.
Okay.
Good evening. Brian Clutier, Director and CEO of Oxford Public Library, and President of the Northeast Oakland Historical Society Museum. I'm here this evening, you should have received notice that we are very pleased to have this Friday evening between 6:00 and 8:00 PM at the Oxford Public Library, two very important murals that pay tribute to this community. We are very fortunate to have on loan from the Historical Society Museum, the two murals that are of the WPA, the Work Progress Administration era, at the library. And this Friday between 6:00 and 8:00, we are welcoming the family of the late artist Barbara Benetti, who will be on hand with us to celebrate the opening ceremony or opening reception of the exhibit. And we will have the murals at the library on exhibit for about two months. So, we hope that if you are available this evening, or on Friday evening, that you'll join us at the library for the reception. That's my first comment. Second comment, I also had the privilege of sitting on many boards, including village council, with Susan Basardi. And I have to thank you for honoring her this evening, because it has been a privilege working with her over the years. And although we still sit on some committees on the side together, I can tell you that through the, whether you agreed with Sue or not over the years, in the last few months or years of her time on council, it was a rather up and down period as they were looking for a new village manager. And her leadership brought them through that period. So, I appreciate very much the contribution that she made. So, thank you for, for honoring her this evening.
Thank you, Brian. Move on to the public hearing. Clear motion? Moved to open the public hearing at 6:53 PM to discuss the establishment of the Squaw Lake/Clear Lake Special Assessment District.
Second.
Moved to the second. Is that a roll call?
It is.
Roll call. Trustee Durk?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
And Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Hey, Gary. We've got medical marijuana.
I've got recreational marijuana.
Just, just for that one, just in case.
Recreation.
So, any questions we got here?
The special assessment?
Yes, come on up. This is, this is your time to...
Embarrass myself?
No, just talk about it.
Dennis Corrigan, 1994 Lakesview in Oxford. I was here at the first hearing, and I'm not here today to argue the legality of the statute, the special assessment district statute. I, I am here to voice my concerns about the poisoning of Clear and Squaw Lake. The trustees of this township were elected to protect the citizens of, of Oxford with the, the chemicals being put in the lake and killing the weeds, which, by the way, is stated in the original application of the, of the special assessment district. Eradication, I don't know any, any other way to eradicate weeds but poisoning them. And it, you're, you're, they're, they're trying to do something that is natural to a lake. A lake has weeds. I've got some, you know, and four to six times a year now, since 2014, weed killers have been, have been sprayed into, into the lake. Now, to me, this doesn't, to me, there's no difference what's happening here as what happened in Flint. Elected officials, the, the law, the emergency manager law is completely legal, just like the, just like the statute for special, the special assessment, assessment district. What isn't right, and people are going to jail for it in Flint, is that the consequences of, of people's actions, who are, who are, who are, who are responsible for the, for the problems in Flint, just to save a couple bucks. As far as I'm concerned, the people on this panel, the elected, elected officials on this panel are just as, just as responsible for allowing the poisons to be put into that lake. And now, I understand Tan Lake is also involved as, as the, as the people, as the elected officials in Flint. I've just got...
Can I have you summarize, sir? Because I've been putting three minutes on most people.
When you have to, when you have to wait 15 days or 14 days to use the, to use the lake after it's sprayed, that's, that's wrong. And that's what's happening. We got it right here on the warning, the, warning the residents not to use the water, not to, not to swim, not to use it to, to water their grass, which is all allowed by law. Second of all, I received a, basically an estimate of what each property owner is going to be paying for the next 10 years. I've got a 60-foot lot. I know a lot of neighbors that have 120-foot lots, and they're paying, and I'm paying the same as they are. That's what, that's what the estimate says. And I don't think that's right either. I don't really expect the spraying to stop. But I'm going to be sending out questionnaires to the residents and the, and the property owners on the lake to find out. My next door neighbor is our, has children who have already had rashes because of, because of the chemical spraying. And I'm sure the medical problems could get a lot worse.
Thank you, sir. Public comment? Yvonne Dudley. No, come on up, Yvonne.
Okay. Yes, Yvonne Dudley, 520 Maloney, Oxford. And in regards to the chemicals, they are...
Talk to me.
Talk to you. Okay, okay. In regards, everything has been... Talk to you, okay, okay. In regards, everything has been researched. This is a reputable company. These are approved by the DEQ. And I've been on this lake for 53 years now, and I've seen a lot. The impact of growth and population explosion, lawn fertilizers, all kinds of things, and natural impact have affected the lake. Back in 1965, it was very pristine. We didn't have all the invasive species. So, now unfortunately, this is what's happened. And it needs to be taken care of. And I'm thankful that, and I agree with having the treatment. Didn't have two years ago, but unfortunately, we need it now. And I'm thankful that it's under control because people were doing it, which nobody's going to name names, but illegally at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, you could hear them out there spreading chemicals. So, I'd rather know what's being put in and safe than illegally in the wee hours, and we don't know what kind of poison can happen. Because there's other lakes in Waterford that have been poisoned, and now they can't even use it. So, I want to say thank you to everyone who did the work and their homework and everything involved in this. Thank you.
Lady in the back? Lady in the back?
Catherine Novenshire, 1621 Harwood. I've lived out here for just over 20 years. And like Yvonne, no, the lake wasn't in terrible shape as it has grown to be. We attribute it much to invasive species that have been introduced with the public launch. And it had gotten to the point where spring turnover meant green and black sludge, and the water stunk. And you couldn't swim or use the water because it was disgusting. So, at that point, you know, folks started doing things on their own. And just as Yvonne said, you'd hear people out in the middle of the night, you'd hear stories about the stuff people were putting in the water, it was becoming impassable in certain areas. And so, people were trying to take care of it themselves. And that's what spurred us to try to do something where we could actually control and have approved items put in the water that would make the water usable and passable again. Since the water treatment has begun, it's clean and beautiful. The fish are amazing. My husband's a major angler, and there's not a night he doesn't walk out off the dock and pull in a big old bass. So, it's not killing the things in the water. And I swim in it all the time, and everybody I know does. And we're not turning up with rashes or weird things happening. So, there is a duration of time after some of the sprays that you do have to stay out of the water, but it's posted for everyone to understand. And obviously, that's a consequence of what we have to do to make the lake so that we can still use it and so that it doesn't stink. So, I'm for the treatment of the lake, obviously. And, you know, we have done a lot of research, and we're very careful about the selection of who we chose, that they would have a scientific background and be ecologists. And they are all ecologists who are coming to look at what the content is in the lake. They're not trying to kill all the weeds. The focus is on invasives, which are what we have in our lake at this point. And we have a group that collects and tests and looks for those invasives to try to prevent any new invasive species coming into the lake, because we already have two different, two or three different ones now. So, and the focus is treating those invasives. Regular weeds are going to be there, and we understand that. And that isn't the focus. So, just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Anybody else on the lake? Yes, ma'am.
Cindy Wright, 1772 Lakesview Drive, Oxford. We had talked, the research we did, we talked to the DEQ back last February to see if there was any other options. Nobody wants to put chemicals in the lake. There's not one person on our lake that's happy about that we have to treat the weeds. But in talking to the representative that does the lakes throughout this area for the DEQ, I said, is there any other options that we have out there right now? Is there new research? Is there new techniques that we can look into? And he said, really, the best thing right now that they have is chemical control to kind of chemically mow and keep the weeds down. We've looked at harvesting, which he says really brings in more invasive species to our lake because they don't clean the harvester very well. We looked at aeration, but he said aeration really, they're looking at it, but it really hasn't been proven. They had a lot of algae blooms in some of the lakes that they've tried. So, we have done our research. And unfortunately, at this time, the chemical control is our best option. And we will continue to research. And the company that we're using, PLM Professional Lake Management, our biologist, and that's why we chose them. We want the best for our lake. We want to keep it the best we can. And right now, that's our option.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the lakes?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:05 p.m. to discuss the establishment of the Squaw Lake, Clear Lake Special Assessment District.
Second. Moved in seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? First reading of the Marijuana Establishment Ordinance. Here, you want to give us a quick overview of the... No, you're going to have to come up.
As most everyone knows, the law has changed in Michigan, allowing for medical marijuana establishments, excuse me, marijuana establishments within communities. And the way the law is written is that if you can opt out of that, making it prohibited, if you act before the state acts to adopt rules and regulations to allow it. So, what we have done is drafted a proposed ordinance that would opt out, assuming that's what the board would want, not have commercial establishments for marijuana. And if you pass that ordinance, then it won't happen in your community until you reverse that position. You need to do that before the state acts. The state is not likely to act for another six months, but we don't know that.
This doesn't prohibit someone from growing it in their home, or...
No, it's a commercial operation.
Basically, they just can't sell it.
Correct.
Yes.
Gary, I got some things here from the MFFLA and MRTMA, all those acronyms. I'm just going to say them. A municipality can limit by ordinance the number of recreational marijuana establishments by type. The MRTMA is not clear whether, if the community allows one type, does it have to allow all types? For example, grow, distribution, transportation, and that. So, if you limit it to one retail establishment in your community, would you have to allow distribution? Would you have to allow grow, mega-grow, if you will, and transportation with it?
We don't know that as yet. We just don't know it. It's still very much an unknown.
Knocked out and always opt back in.
That's correct.
Things end up getting...
That's correct. You're stabilizing it until such a time.
Some of the rules are established.
Right.
I move to set a second reading of possible adoption. Marijuana establishments ordinance to be considered at the Charter Tunch of Oxford Board Trustees, February 13th, 2019 regular meeting.
Support.
Moved and supported.
Discussion.
Yes.
Yeah, I've been wrestling with this one for the past week. I've talked to Curtis on it. I've talked to the Oakland County Sheriff's Department. I've talked to many municipalities that have opted in and opted out. Just for this board's information, 55% of the Oxford voters, one of the largest turnouts, 55% of the voters voted for the establishment of recreational marijuana in our community. You know, we're facing right now this Carrie Nation versus Tommy Chong, I look at it as. You know, what I don't like about this act is that you can grow up to 12 plants in your house or in your backyard. And I'll give you an example. If five of my neighbors want to grow plants, that's 60 plants. That's approximately 60 pounds. That's 960 ounces. That's $200 an ounce, gives you approximately close to $200,000.
Those are some pretty good plants.
Yeah. Well, this is a lot different than back in the 60s, Bill, when they said you should have been... You know, I look at this, and I see us, everybody in this room can grow pot, you know, according to this new law. And people aren't going to grow it if you have an establishment, one. We have, the same thing happened with Carrie Nation back in the days. You had prohibition. You can't distill alcohol today in volume. Why? Because what ends up happening with your excess is you sell it. Now, you have five people that are growing 60 pounds of pot. What are they going to do with this extra pot? Now, they're going to become an establishment. And why I say that right now is because this isn't a dark alley sales of marijuana. It doesn't happen like that. It happens in businesses. It happens in the village. It happens in churches. It happens in school. It happens at friends' houses. And I'm trying to get my arms around this because I can't, I don't like the 12 plants growing. Because what that's going to be is, somebody's going to walk around and see you growing 12 plants. Well, why would I grow them? I'll just cut yours down. Trespassing, stealing, you're going to have all this crime bringing up. The Oakland County Sheriff's Department is, they've thrown their hands up in this whole medical, or this whole recreational marijuana. Recently, they found to grow 20 plants. The guy said, well, I got a couple of medicals, and yeah, you caught me. What did net do? Nothing. Because this, you know, it's beyond their belief. They throw their hands up. So, I don't want us to throw our hands up and say, well, let's wait. Let's do this. Let's not do this. I would be very cautious on how we vote for this ordinance to opt out when you have communities around us that are opting out, and some are not opting out. But I just, I can't see open growing of marijuana in everybody's house in Oxford. At least 5,625 people that voted for it and 4,600 that voted against it. I mean, people came into this township and voted for this amendment solely and didn't even look at the front of the ballot. So, I would ask that we don't opt out, and we take control of our ordinance. And if you allow a establishment, then you would be taking charge of this and offering to people that might grow because they want to recreate once in a while. But I don't want all this pot running around for sale in the village of Oxford or in the township of Oxford. So, we got to look at this. We're selling alcohol in gas stations. We sell alcohol everywhere in the township. If you don't want to buy alcohol, you don't go there. So, I guess that's my point.
Joe, I think it must be in the different circles than you do, because I'm not seeing too many people running around with all this pot. So, we must hang around different circles.
Well, don't make accusations, Joe, because you're hanging around with the same people. But if you do your research, you wouldn't say things like that. And if you go to the policing municipalities and find out, no, they don't want the pot law at all. And I'm sure that when we had prohibition, you had people that didn't want alcohol at all. Now, look at it. It's in gas stations.
Yeah, but it's different back then. As the alcohol evolved, it became regulated. It had rules and regulations. That's the problem with this. It doesn't have that yet.
We can regulate it by...
We're assuming that. We're assuming that. We don't know that.
I'm not assuming.
The law could end up being written by the state.
One person at a time.
The law could end up being written by the state saying, if you allow one, you got to allow 100. We don't know any of it. We don't know that yet.
No, that's not true.
Oh, oh, Jack. It's one person talking at a time.
The state's not promulgated their rules yet. Once they get everything all established, we know what we're dealing with. For all the different rules as what our voters voted upon, we can definitely tackle it again. We can tackle medical marijuana again. We got to have these rules spelled out. We're assuming that if we allow one, we'll set our future. So, they could put right in the rules, if you allow one, you have to allow 100. We don't know that. Once they hand down the rules to the locals, because they're going to govern it, they'll give us direction on how we can handle this if we choose to regulate it. Right now, it's open, too open right now. We have no idea what we're even regulating. If the state doesn't know, how are we going to know?
Elgin?
I guess I support a number of things that Joe has said, but I go back to interviewing and talking to police officers. I did a lot of reporting a while back, which I dealt with the Sheriff's Department. At that time, this was an issue, and none of them, none of them that I ever talked to, wanted to see this thing take law. Now, what did you find out, Jack? When you talked to the police department?
They're throwing their arms up.
Why?
How are you going to regulate? How many plants you grow in your house? 13?
Okay, but there's more to it than that.
We have an opportunity to regulate the number of establishments.
But they're concerned also with the type of incidents that they have on the highway and compounding situation. Colorado has increased their accidents, as pointed out, you know, in statistics. They just had a major accident caused by marijuana usage near Detroit, killing a family. Those are things the Sheriff's Department is interested in. I mean, they have to deal with alcohol, which is a problem, of course, but now to add to it marijuana, which is very hard to detect unless you take a blood test.
Okay, any other comment? Would there be a motion? There is one on the floor. Is it to... This is a motion in seconded. Somebody repeat that to me, please?
It's moved to set a second reading of possible adoption of a marijuana establishment ordinance to be considered at the Charter Tunch of Oxford Board Trustees, February 13th, 2019 regular meeting.
Roll call. Trusty Durk?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
This is only for one year, is that correct?
Nope. Still, the law is written.
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
No.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trusty Nichols?
No.
Motion passes. Fire Department, EMS, cost recovery.
Evening, Board members. Every year, AccuMed, our company that does our cost recovery billing for us, reviews the insurance rates from Medicaid, Medicare, Blue Cross, and then makes recommendations to us as far as what our rates should be set at to match theirs. What I have done is prepared to you a list of increasing our rates to directly reflect what the current Blue Cross billings will be for our residents. And then we also have the charging also for the non-residents, which is slightly more. This is our, last time I was done was in 2017. Just got them probably two weeks ago. So, this is what we're recommending for 2019.
Any questions from the board?
We do a little bit of rounding. We've got one, 46223.
That's what Blue Cross puts on there.
The exact venue?
Yep, that's exactly it.
Was that a typo?
If I put more on there, then they're not, you know...
It's still odd.
Okay, I thought they'd say like 462. All good. I guess they don't.
Do exactly what Blue Cross covers.
Okay.
It's a typo, though.
What's a typo?
It should be 53 cents. It's still odd, remember?
46253. Right. I move to adopt the EMS Cost Recovery Fee Schedule, reference to Section 26-18, Chapter 26, Fire Prevention and Protection, the Oxford Charter Tunch of Court Ordinances, to be effective immediately. Placing the EMS Cost Recovery Fee Schedule that was adopted with the Charter Tunch of Oxford Board Trustees on January 11th, 2017, attaching January 9th, 2019 EMS Cost Recovery Fee Schedule as amended as appendix to the minutes.
Second. Moved in seconded. Roll call. Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trusty Durk?
Yes.
And Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you, Board members.
Okay, thanks, chief. Squaw Lake, Clear Lake Special Assessment District Resolution Number Four. Clerk Wright? Yeah, this is the final and last resolution to be approved tonight by the Township Board. If they choose to move forward with a special assessment district, that's the number one on your handout there. The second one is, this will, resolution will confirm the assessment role. And number three, it will confirm to assess the cost of the special assessment district to the properties within the assessment district. And there's a map of the district right here, showing those that will be assessed. So, with that, motion. Books, I move to approve Resolution Number Four, approval of special assessment role for Squaw Lake, Clear Lake Special Assessment District, and the special assessment role attached as Exhibit One to Resolution Number Four, to implement an aquatic weed control special assessment district program for Squaw Lake and Clear Lake. Support. Moved and supported. Yes.
Because I'm assuming since this is renewal, they were happy with the first go-round?
Say yes, or they wouldn't come back for another term. Plus, they are going for 10 years instead of five. What's your roll call? Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trusty Durk?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
And Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Employee Handbook Updates. I'm going to go to you, Curtis.
Okay, at our last meeting, we did approve a handbook, and we were requested to look into the substance abuse policy. into the substance abuse policy. Since then, Paychex Marjana McLean has been contacted, and she originally took the Family Medical Leave Act out of the ordinance, the handbook, excuse me. And then she subsequently has re-added it in based upon some inquiries and review by herself and another employee at Paychex. So that item has been added back into the amended handbook. The substance abuse issue has been left the same based upon their recommendation. And what else? The jury leave section, we didn't want people to be unpaid if the jury case lasted more than five days. So with that and some grammatical changes, the handbook has been updated for consideration. But since then, I spoke to Supervisor Don this afternoon on a few issues that I have with the handbook. One of those is with my elections. And in the handbook, there's a provision in there that employees can only accumulate 10 hours of compensation time. Based upon how my elections work and with the change in the law that was just approved in November, we now have to be open eight hours on weekends, whether it's Saturday or Sunday or both, a combination. And also, for us to get our election prepared and get the people to vote, we've got basically a 10 to 15-hour day on Monday and an 18-hour day on Tuesday, so no way be able to comply with this.
You just...
Handbook delays. Well, that's true.
Pay overtime.
Well, I cannot pay overtime to a deputy because they're outselling the way this is written. So what I would like to do is propose to bring back the changes that I would like to see happen, see if the board is in agreement with that. And also, I have my deputy's daughter that's still coming into work to help with the elections. I know this policy that would not be possible, but she's a part-time employee, and she's very knowledgeable for what she does, so I would like to see that situation if you can continue, so...
Let's tackle these off the table, and then we'll look at the other ones at the next meeting. I move to approve the Oxford Township Play Handbook to amendments to the following sections: Substance Abuse Jury Leave, Family Medical Leave.
Moved. Support. And seconded by Jack.
We're not addressing the...
He's going to come back with...
Going to come back.
With the new...
At least these will be addressed. At least we want to do that.
So some amendments.
So imagine what you're going to do is have separate motions to approve each section that was amended. So you come back with a jury leave?
Yeah, it's to include amendments to the following.
So if we agree with these, then those are done, and then we'll come back with...
Next section.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Don?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
And Trusty Darke?
Yes.
Let's see. Uh, it is removed. Public comment? Seeing none. Board of Trustees comment? Jack?
I was contacted today by the Tough Mudder folks. They're coming back again in 2019, have Kinnick Sand and Gravel. They want a preliminary meeting to just discuss who the players are again this year, names, phone numbers, in order to ascertain their TNA accounts for the sheriff, the fire department, ambulances, those kind of things. So they're coming back again in 2019. I do not have the dates, but some of the issues that we talked in our downloading meeting after the last event will be addressed at this meeting. And then once they have all the names and numbers, they will put together a meeting with the village, the township, the sheriff, the fire department again, like we did.
Okay. Eldred?
Nothing.
Nope.
I'd like to see us come up with some type of policy and resolutions honoring people, because right now, what we're doing is playing favorites. Sue does a great job, don't get me wrong, but I mean, we've had other people that have been on the village council that we've never done resolutions for. There are people that have been on our own boards, that have been replacement or 20-some years, never done a resolution for. We have some type of a policy that says how we're going to get that done, because right now, it looks like, we like Sue, congratulations, you get it. We don't like Person X, sorry, you don't get a resolution. It should be based on something, whether it's years of service, service of the community, what board you are on, whatever. There should be something, because I don't like the government playing favorites. It's just not, not something we should do. That's all I've got.
I have nothing. Kirk?
Oh, yeah, just to add on to, thank you to Sue for her serving in public office for the village. And I think if people had the enthusiasm she had for Oxford, we'd make that much more a better place for Oxford.
Patty?
Yeah.
Eldred?
I would like to say that, again, with Sue Posada, she's done a great job for the village. She's to be commended for it. I've served on boards with her, as well as Brian Clutier.
And on the council.
And the council, right. I'd just like to say publicly, thank you very much for your service to the village and consequently to the township.
Make a motion adjourned.
There's been a motion. Nobody wants to go home? I'll support it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?